You like the new cube, the triangle thing? So you said it once, so it's something you said. Electricity funding. So we've got a whole bunch of.
Okay, it is 5:30 and I'd like to call this meeting of the Community Economic Development Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Avery? Commissioner Fluehling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
All right, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
To move.
Is there a support? Okay, I sup- okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. All right, public comment to the committee, going once. Is there any public comment to the committee? Going twice, public comment to the committee, final call. Public comments are closed. All right, communications, first of all, 25-847, Community Acceleration and Revitalization Initiative, or CARRY proposal. So, I want to just give everybody an update. On September 26, I attended a capacity building symposium where I heard a panel of local philanthropic leaders talk about funding. One of the panelists cited a study from the Dorothy Johnson Center for Philanthropy. The study responded to this question, "How long could U.S. philanthropy last if it was asked to cover every dollar the federal government spends?" The answer, not very long. Private and community foundations could cover 79 days of a single year of the U.S. federal government expenditures. The takeaway, as another panelist put it that day, they, that the foundations can't be the savior. That's why I want to reemphasize the careful consideration of the Community Acceleration and Revitalization Initiative, or CARRY for short. Based on feedback from realtors, bankers, and other stakeholders, we have adjusted the original proposal, cutting the transfer amount in half, which would still allow for the creation of almost $7 million per year to help fuel economic growth. Next week, you'll hear additional information about the state of our local economy from a professor at Michigan State University. Once you hear his presentation, my hope is that you will have a better understanding of why we need to consider this initiative or come up with some additional alternatives. The next thing is 25-848, an update on the CVB Event Funding Request Application. In the last two years, this board has raised the bar relative to outcomes for events that receive funding. Our relationship with the Convention and Visitors Bureau has been strengthened in recent months and has yielded reports that illustrate return on investment. To help make these reports easier to produce, a more uniform process was needed to vet funding requests from organizers. To that end, an event funding request application has been drafted for your review. It details whether this is a new or repeat event, estimated room nights, target audience, and how the funds will be used. More importantly, we will request a post-event summary from each organizer request, and that summary will be due to us within 30 days to help us assess the actual economic impact. After you've had a chance to review the draft, which you do have in front of you, I'm happy to receive any questions or comments you may have. Finally, 25-849, the Broadband Task Force Update, the $4 million budget allocation and next steps. Before I share next steps, I think there is value in reflecting on the why and the what relative to our broadband priority. Nicknamed Gig City because of their progressive implementation of a public-private broadband initiative, the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee grew in population between 2020 and 2023 from 181,568 to 187,300 residents. That's an increase of approximately 3%. Hamilton County's population grew from 367,251 to 379,864 during that same timeframe. And three reasons were cited for their growth: manufacturing development, affordability, and the availability of high-speed internet. High-speed internet makes communities a more attractive option for remote workers. As we grapple with the notion of dropping below 400,000 in population, we must devise strategies to attract and keep people here in Genesee County. Recognizing these factors, this board authorized $4 million toward broadband development in the Budget Resolution 2025-2221. In August of 2023, the county launched its broadband task force to coordinate broadband expansion and ensure universal high-speed access across the county. The task force, made up of representatives from colleges, universities, foundations, the GISD, local municipalities, and county officials, partnered with the nonprofit Merit to help guide our work. Since then, we've visited other counties to witness their progress, hosted Dr. Bento Lobo, the architect of Gig City in Chattanooga, Tennessee. We've developed an infrastructure engineering study that identified a $40 million estimate for the work, and we've talked to state and national officials about BEAD funding changes. And last fall, we completed a study by Michigan State University to assess broadband accessibility and quality. Other counties have used our funding to fuel their broadband efforts, and that's why, in part, they are ahead of the game. But we've been working on this for three years. We are learning from our mistakes, from the mistakes of others, rather. Indeed, this is a process that's a marathon, it's not a sprint. And we recognize there is also a cost of doing nothing. So we must forge ahead with broadband. And in front of you, one of the reasons you have this little "or" is so that we can all row in the same direction with next Genesee, and you can be a next Genesee architect for 2026. Next steps, in January 2026, our broadband group will transition from a task force to a strategy group. It'll be known as the Next Genesee Strategy Group. And the goal of this group will be to design and issue an RFP with specific outcomes that will help us reach our goal of high-speed internet and affordability for all. Our corporate counsel is also doing research on contractual models. Ultimately, the group will offer recommendations to the board about which business model to adopt: the public internet service model, a private internet partner, a public-private partnership model, or a public-public model. All of these models will receive appropriate consideration during 2026. Also during that time, the board will discuss broadband models during a dedicated workshop, and the date for that will be determined. I do have some new business to share. As I noted earlier, on December 10, during our regular board meeting, I've invited Dr. Mark Skidmore, professor and Morris Chair in the State and Local Government Finance and Policy Department at Michigan State, to speak to us about his research on the state of Genesee County's economy. He will offer a 15-minute overview entitled "The Net Flow of Federal Funds to States and Counties" with a case study of Genesee County. So we look forward to his remarks next week. That concludes the new business, and now we have Resolution 2025-2739, Approval of Catholic Charities Transfer Requests.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there somebody here that can explain this a little bit in more detail?
Um, Mr. Bradshaw is approaching the microphone.
Thank you. Through you, the Chair, Catholic charities originally applied for these grants and then indicated to us a month or two ago that they were not able to actually provide those services. So we reached out to our providers who have already applied. Are there other people that could provide these services? So the two services that we're talking about in here are homeless prevention activities, so that's like rent, those type of things. G Card currently already has that program, so they said, yes, we could take that extra money and be able to provide that services. The other program was our housing. So these are people that, once you become homeless, how do you get them back into a house? And the Y actually has a program like that, so they said, yes, we could take that funding and be able to provide those services. So really, we're just trying to reallocate those funds from an agency that was not able to provide them.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Chair, can I ask?
Yes. Commissioner Wayhill?
Thank you through you to Mr. Bradshaw. So the total, looks like it's about $29,000 between the two. Question, do you open up the opportunity to anyone that's not currently getting the Emergency Solutions Grant, or was it just the agencies that are on this list?
So, because we had already done a call, we just asked the current agencies that had done the call. We are, at this point, going to be opening up a call for next year. So I would expect in the next month or so, we will open up a call for projects from any agency.
Okay.
For our next year.
Is it limited to nonprofits?
It's nonprofits, and you also have to participate in the continuum of care.
Got it. Okay, continuum of care is where they meet monthly, do similar work, and talk about how to avoid duplication and work better?
Yep, so it's kind of one-stop, so that-
Right.
-to make sure that there's coordination between all of our emergency shelters, those type of things. We actually had a presentation at our last allocation meeting on the continuum of care, and some of the, quite truthfully, some of the struggles right now they're having trying to deal with some of the homeless issues that are in Genesee County.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Derek. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Is there any other business through the committee?
It's to set a comment period for the master plan?
Oh, oh, the master plan, of course. Mr. Bradshaw, are you, can you come on up again? I think you have this 1,000-page document to talk about.
Yes, so I actually, there was paper copies provided for all the commissioners. We also gave you a link to the website as well. As you remember, probably a month or two ago, I came and talked about the master plan process. This process, we're at a point now where we need to go out for our 63-day public comment period. And as part of that public, as part of that public comment period, we have, right now, three public input sessions. They're scheduled in January. One's going to be up in Claya, one's down in Fenton, and one's in Flint. If there are additional meetings that any commissioners want us to attend, groups, or to get additional input, reach out to me. We're more than happy to go to anywhere. So we're definitely open to that. Ultimately, all the comment will get back. That'll go back to our steering committee, back to our planning commission to make a recommendation in April to this body for our final approval of this. Two things to know about this plan, in a nutshell, without getting too detailed, because it is quite a detailed plan. This is the guide for Genesee County for the next 25 years. We redo it every five years. It is $2.1 billion approximately in funding. It's required in order for us to access that funding, whether it's community development, transportation. But more importantly, this is, if you had to say, what is the vision? And if you go through and look at some of the details, the comments, the things that came from the work sessions, you'll see those reflected in some of the action steps and details in the plan. So, anybody have specific comments? More than happy, shoot me an email with those. I can go through them. It is out for, so it's going out for, it's a draft. I expect that we will get comments. I expect we'll make some changes. We've already got some changes about formatting and how do we do things differently. But in essence, it's a pretty robust document, and so that's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. Questions?
I think you need a motion, right?
Oh, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Now can we have question and discussion?
If you, if I might, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wayhill.
Um, tell me, you might have said this and it went over my head. I'm sure you said it when you did the presentation, which I remember. Who, who put the draft together? Who are the individuals?
So staff of the Genesee County Planning Commission. So it's a staff-driven process. So that is pretty much every single staff that works at the planning commission that's involved in it.
Did the actual commission members see this and bump it up to us?
Yes.
So it was approved by them?
Yes, so it was approved yesterday by the planning commission to make a recommendation to this body.
Okay, so staff, creation, planning commission input, approval, comes to the county commission. We now, and when do the 60 days start, as soon as we take the vote next week?
I think it's 22nd. So we have some notification requirements. We have to give a 10-day notice to, before it goes out for public comment. So I think officially it will go for public comment, I think, the 22nd of December.
And then, just a comment about priorities, I mean, this is obviously about priorities in a lot of different areas. I've, I said this before when I was discussing the goals and priorities that we set over the summer, at least that we brainstormed and have on a list. My intent was to bring those in the form of a resolution for adoption, probably to this meeting or this one, and then next week for final approval. But I, I know I heard Commissioner Shoemaker say, at one point, he wanted to talk more with me about those. And it occurred to me that we probably should have one more study session of an hour to look at those, knowing that we're going to bring them before this body for a final approval. I know that when we did the brainstorming, that's how I'll describe it, and putting stuff in sticky notes and all that, things get up there. Sometimes we forget that, you know, someone put this up there and we didn't realize it. We have an issue with it or have questions. I want to make sure that we've got one last opportunity to drill down on that for an hour. And then, the way that relates is that obviously it's parallel to this document. It's not a formal piece of this, but I think we want to make sure that if there's things in here that we haven't thought of, they need to go on our list. If there's anything that's contradictory between the two documents, we would want to know that before we adopt either, so. This is very timely, is, that's a long way of saying this is very timely, Mr. Bradshaw. So, thank you for the work. Maybe at some point, we can have your staff come in, and we can thank them for producing the document. It's down the road a little bit. But I did want to make the comment, and I was gonna, I don't know where our chair is of the full commission, but I was going to bring up tonight that we need to set, I think, a study session to talk about our priorities at some point in the next month or two. So, thank you, and back to you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Shoemaker, did you have a question? No, I thought I saw your hand up. All right.
No, no, I was just looking over this lovely presentation here and some wonderful pictures. I'm sorry.
It is a really robust report, and I want to add my thanks to Commissioner Wayhill's comments. And I had a chance to listen to it during the final master planning meeting on Monday, and then had a chance to listen to it again on Tuesday morning. And each time, I've been really, really just blown away by the level of work, the quality of the work that's gone into this report. And I know it's been months and months in the making, and I want to emphasize that this is just a summary document. There are lots of other technical reports that help support this, that are packed with data. And this is a really good blueprint for any other municipality to refer to so that they can go ahead and start to work on their own master plans. And so, the people that worked on this are listed, actually, on page four of the document. So you can see everybody on the Metropolitan Planning Commission, everybody on the Alliance, the Steering Committee, members that met, and then the allocations committee. But is there anybody from the Derek staff here in the audience tonight? Is it just you? Okay. Yeah, have them come back, because I mentioned to Derek that we don't want any long, super-long presentations during committee meetings. So he's gonna come, he can come back next week and talk to us when we are hunkered down. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
You're welcome.
Do we already have a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, now is there any other business? All right, I think we are adjourned at 5:48.
I call the Finance Committee to order at 5:49. Call to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuzma?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 5. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the Finance Committee. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address this committee at this point in time? Second call, is there anybody else, or anybody that's willing to come up to the podium and speak to us? Third time, we're done. Thank you. We don't have any communications, old business, new business. I'm looking for a motion for 25-2619, Approval Request to Create, Post, and Fill 1 Chief Strategic Growth Officer Position.
Move it with a question.
Support.
Okay, the question, please.
Well, I have a couple through this and through the chair, whoever can answer the question. One, is this going to be posted to our normal process through HR?
Yes.
Who's putting that job description together?
It's attached to the resolution.
I see, who's responsible for that one, then, I should I say?
It was a combination of Dr. Brown and Commissioner Wayhill.
All right. Next, my next question is, who's involved in the process of actually hiring once we get to this portion of it? Once we get our candidates in?
So in the past, it was Dr. Brown and Commissioner Wayhill who interviewed. I sat in on those interviews, but that's up to this board to decide how they want to do that.
For which department?
That was for our org development position.
My question is, we've changed process several times, and as always, I'm just trying to create a fluid process that has been, that has happened before. I don't know, I remember Christian Winfrey was down here with me when we, when Commissioner Nolden was still with us, you know, the process was government operations is where the hiring process went through, and then it went to the full board, from that standpoint. Because when we hired Animal Control and-
I think those were the parent committees, is why they did it that way.
So.
So I think, to your point, that's how it was.
So it's going to be based on, the committees are going to oversee it instead of the-
Well, and I think you are going to be looking at a possible amendment to the appointment policy as well that would take into that, that would take this into account, too, so.
Okay. Like I said, I think, I think this is very, to the rest of the board, you know, I'm not for spending dollars freely or loosely, but I think this is something we need to look at very seriously, and I hope the rest of the board thinks the way I do about this, that we've got to do something. I'm not saying we're all going to agree on what that something is, but we need someone to kind of unite our different communities as far as their strategic plan and our strategic plan. I think this is a good start. You know, I hope we hire the right person right away, and I was talking to Mr. Freeman yesterday, and I think this is definitely needed, and if it doesn't work, I'll be shocked. And I, I think it's going to be something that's going to really benefit this county, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody else that has anything? Mr. Wayhill?
I want to thank Dr. Brown for her dedication to the topic of community and economic development. This is only one piece of that. I do think this will move us forward. The, the job description is in the packet, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to see it, it is public. And, you know, I had a lengthy conversation today with some of our partners in the community, and this was one of the topics, and assured them that we want to work in partnership with people and not crosswise with anyone, and, you know, in a spirit of collaboration. And those words are in this document. I know that we wrote them that way intentionally. To Commissioner Shoemaker's question about the hiring process, I think I recall when we had our study session, and this was one of the items, that it was almost like we collectively wanted to be part of the process. So, I don't know how, as a practical matter, that would work. Maybe it's a committee of the whole, and we do interviews together, or whoever wants to come. I'm open to anything, so that we've got maximum participation and buy-in from the commission, given the seriousness and the importance of the role and what it could do for the county. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shoemaker, you had another comment?
Yeah, I do have another, just another question. I just, I remember reading through here, and forgive me for this, but who, who is this individual reporting to?
It says-
Is it the whole board? Is it the chair of the?
I think it's outlined in the job description who they would report to. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but I want to say it was reporting to the Director of Administration, but working in close collaboration with the Board Chair and the Chair of Economic, Community and Economic Development. I believe that's how it's worded.
Yes, did you have a comment there, Mr. Wayhill?
If you wish, thank you, Mr. Chair. I can read. Under Job Summary, the second paragraph, it says, "The Chief Strategic Growth Officer will closely collaborate with and take their priorities from the Genesee County Board of Commissioners and through the Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Community and Economic Development Committee." "The Chief Strategic Growth Officer will closely collaborate with the Director of Planning for Genesee County, as well as local units of government, public agencies, public sector partners, et cetera, et cetera." It does not mention, this, this version does not mention the Director of Administration.
Okay, okay. Well, that's what we landed on, then.
As, as far as reporting to, but work with.
Yes.
So, I, I thank you for, Commissioner Wayhill, thank you for reading that. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? I just wanted to echo Mr. Shoemaker's comments and the fact that this is a job, you know, that's, well, we need it. I don't like adding things to the budget once we set it, but, you know, I'm frugal. But I think the return on this investment, if you will, will far exceed whatever expense we create by creating this position, so. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2621, Approval of a Purchase Order to Bound Tree Medical for the fiscal year ending 2026, in an amount not to exceed $5,000 to provide for specialized medical supplies at Genesee County's medical examiner.
Support.
Move it. Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2654, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the Paid County Bills for the weeks ending 10/26/25, 11/2/25, in the total amount of $9,495,558.35.
Move it.
Support. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2675, Approval of Request to Obtain a Purchase Order to Genesee Packaging Incorporated for the fiscal year ending 2026, not to exceed $35,000 to provide for materials necessary for food distribution. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2681, Approval of Purchase Order to Bob Barker for fiscal year 2020, oh, 2026, yeah, in the amount of $8,000 to provide for bedding-related supplies to inmates housed at the jail. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following account.
Move it. Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any disapproved? Motion passes. Approval of a Proposed Budget Amendment to the Department of Community Engagement and Justice Services to reallocate employee costs within the grant.
Move it. Support.
Any comments or questions?
Do we have a little more explanation on this?
Yes. Who do we need, Josh? Okay.
Good evening. To be exact, when we closed our fiscal year for fiscal year 2025, we identified that there was some funds still in our Community Corrections Grant that were lapsing. And with the opportunity, why? Because of the requirement of being locked to the 80/20, our Office of Fiscal Services couldn't move myself, even though I'm leveraged between both opportunities, right? Opioid settlement funds and our grant dollars. And we would love that opportunity to be open-ended, not to exceed the 80% in general, but be able, sometimes maybe, to pull 70% from opioid settlement and use 30% from our Community Corrections Grant. We definitely want to utilize our asset, and that being our grant. And because of the lock language, we were not able to do that. And that, that hinders our department when it comes to Community Corrections, because we want, we requested more money, and you don't get that extra money if we're lapsing dollars in general. Obviously, it makes total sense. But that was the reasoning why.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments, Marlene? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2698, Approval of Genesee County's Fourth Quarter Investment Report.
Support. Or move.
Support.
Okay, anybody have any, that's fine. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-2726, Approval of a Grant Award from Michigan Department of Corrections in the amount of $625, or $21- Department of Corrections in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five, or twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars to provide for Genesee County's community correction program for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six. The budget for this grant is attached.
Move it. Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Shoemaker?
This is a grant we've received before, am I correct? Yep. Is it, is it gone up this year or down? I can't remember the...
Great question. Thank you very much. We honestly asked for six hundred and thirty thousand for this fiscal year. We did not receive or approve and to be honest, we lapsed exactly what they honestly take, take, took away and they didn't even know it. So, about nine thousand is what we did. We made four thousand more. We're getting four thousand more this fiscal...
Which really doesn't keep up with the cost of inflation.
No, absolutely not, but it gives you a little bit of heart light.
You'll do your best with it.
Yeah, oh, yes, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven thirty-eight, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the twenty-five dash twenty-six appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Move it. Support.
Anybody have any comments or questions about the re-portionment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We don't have any other business. We now stand adjourned at whatever time it is.
Six o'clock.
Thank you.
The governmental operations committee is called to order at six oh one PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Flueeling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We have a quorum. Approval of the minutes, approval of meeting minutes for November fifth, twenty-twenty-five. What's your pleasure? It's been moved. Is there support? Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have any public comment to governmental operations committee? Any public comment to governmental operations? One last time. Any public comment? Public comment is closed. It appears we have no communications or old business. Under new business, resolution twenty-two-four dash one-three-seven-three, approval of a grant award from the Office of Victims of Crime, Burn, Discretionary Community Project in the amount of nine hundred sixty-three thousand dollars to continue ghost operations which combats drug and human trafficking. The term of this grant is until September twenty-twenty-seven. Move it. Support. It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-three-five-one, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Plant Moran in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred dollars to provide healthcare consulting services. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, did we go out to any other group?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, yes, this went through there.
Would you, would you identify yourself by name and title? That's okay.
Anita Galeida, Human Resources Labor Relations Director. This actually went out to bid through our RFP process with our purchasing department.
Okay. Next question, could, you know, we've been through this dance, what, four times, probably five? Thank you for your smile while you're answering my questions. Appreciate it. My next question is obviously the low bidder.
Not the lowest bidder, no. Not obvious.
Are we six thousand dollars off? How much difference were we off with the other?
I would have to look, but the lowest bidder was a single individual and there's no way you can do what we need done with a single individual. So, they were just eliminated at that point.
You may.
How many others did we have?
There were six.
And if you can't see him back there with that bright sweater, you're not paying attention.
Oh, I can see him. I can see him.
So, so we had, we had five?
Five.
They've done this, how long for us have they been doing this evaluation?
Plant Moran?
Yes.
Been providing the services? Hmm. I want to say five years now.
Five or six.
Mm-hmm. I think there's a partial year in there, so if you want to round out, six.
Sounds about right. Can, can you explain real quick what this is for our residents? You and I have been through this many times, but can you explain this, where, what these funds are actually, what we're using these for?
So, health insurance and prescription coverage is a multi-million dollar expense for the county. Back in two thousand and five, I believe, we started to address the costs for our healthcare expenses and that step was to go self-insured. So, we went from paying premiums to the insurance companies to pay in claims. We would pay a company to do administrative work, but we were actually paying the claims. And then from there, it gets very complicated and very expensive since two thousand and five, obviously. So, Plant Moran and the healthcare consultants we've had in the past are there because they're subject matter experts who are tracking the trends and bringing us options to maintain our quality of healthcare at reasonable costs for the employees. And it is, I can't, I can't overemphasize how complex that is, how many changes we've made since two thousand and five with that goal in mind.
Mr. Shoemaker?
How many other counties, uh, do you know? How many other counties are self-funded like we are? In, in Michigan, not to nationalize, sorry.
Yeah, in Michigan, I don't know the number, but I would venture to guess because you don't want to do self-insured unless you're a particular size. If you're small enough, you're not going to take that risk on of huge claims. But I would venture to guess the majority of them are self-insured or partially self-insured.
Mr. Shoemaker?
This, this is a question for you and I and everybody discussed later, though. In two thousand and five, when we started to look at this and to go self-insured?
Mm-hmm.
We were a much larger county.
In two thousand and five, when we did that, we were about, employee-wise, we were about twelve hundred and we did dip down. We went below a thousand for a few years, but we're up around eleven hundred again.
What I'm going to say is population-wise, not just employees?
Oh, yeah, for population, definitely.
So, I understand that we need to evaluate to make sure we can fund this correctly, but...
Absolutely.
You know, as, as a board, we should, we should be looking into all options, but have they looked at options for us to actually go back to and how feasible it would be for us to actually purchase insurance now? Is that part of this?
Yes, actually. So, just a little background, I think you were here, Commissioner, but maybe not the other commissioners. We created through contract negotiations, a healthcare coalition and every one of our bargaining units participate on that coalition. So, instead of negotiating healthcare through our contract negotiations, which we just finished up, we do this every, all year. Almost every month we meet so that they're keeping an eye on trends and what's costing more and what can we do to leverage some changes. So, that's what has happened is the healthcare coalition has been working on this and they decided and they all voted, their individual bargaining units voted to move, I'm sorry, I'm on a different topic. That's coming up later. Put a pin in that. The healthcare, the healthcare consultants work with that coalition to work with them all year to help us keep ahead of, as best we can, the cost for the healthcare. And I'm sorry, I lost track of what your question was.
No, that's okay. You were out about, got to it, but...
Okay.
My, my next one, if I may, through the chair, is just continue this.
You may.
So, our residents understand that this may seem like a, a large amount for something to be, like this to be done, but could you inform the public of what we spend annually on healthcare through the county?
It is millions. I don't know the exact number. If there's a, a holler from the back, Crystal might know ballpark-wise, but it is millions of dollars because it's not just for the active employees, it's also retirees and retirees outnumber the active employees now. So, we have eleven hundred employees, we have twelve hundred plus retirees and then all of the lives on those, with those people. It's more than one, right? Because you have families and you have spouses that are covered on that. So, it is a multi-million dollar expense to the county.
Thank you, Anita. I really appreciate it. And if you can't tell, she goes through this a lot, so.
Also?
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Kuzno?
I always like to add at this point in time, Mr. Shoemaker always brings it out very eloquently. But back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when we first took this approach to buying our healthcare, uh, and in this case, Plant Moran, we hired them. I like to point out to the public, by changing the process of the way the county provides the healthcare to its employees and retirees, this hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expense saved us five to seven million dollars a year, right from the get-go, and we still continue to receive that benefit.
Actually, it's back in two thousand and five. A little bit sooner. It was in two thousand and five when we started that.
I'm talking about what we did in two thousand seventeen and, I mean, two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty.
They saved...
You know, I'm not that old, Anita, you know, I, I don't go back to oh-five, you know.
I've been around a long time.
No, but I, I like to point that out to the residents whenever, every year we get to this point on this expense and I'm glad we, uh, RFP it, you know. I'm not necessarily set that we have to do Plant Moran, but they've done a very good job at helping us through this crisis. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, do we have additional discussion? Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-six-six-five, approval of a purchase order to Pinnacle Design for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-six in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand forty-six dollars fourteen cents to provide for the purchase of furniture at the sixty-seventh District Court. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support with a question.
Support with a question. Mr. Flueeling?
Is there anybody here that can speak to this? You can? So, is this for the new courtroom, the transfer from Mount Morrison-Fleshing?
Uh, no, this isn't for the courtroom, this is for the staff.
Okay. So, it's just an up, update of office furniture?
Yeah, if you've ever been out to Mount Morris especially, but also flushing, the furniture is very, um, used. So, rather than transferring that in and then we have a mixed, mismatch of all the furniture in there, we're trying to get a uniform look and use so that, just like we did in this building, we have a, a template to move forward with.
Okay. Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My next, my question is, is we're, we're doing a space study to see if we need to move that court out of there, so my fear is, and I've been down here long enough to see this happen, is you're going to buy the furniture for this building and in three years when, if we built a new building and the new offices are going in there, you're buying new furniture because you want all that to be uniform.
Yep, so what we, if I'm...
No, go ahead. No, you're fine.
So, what we did with this building is set a standard for furniture. So, you'll see, um, uh, offices have, are basically all have the same furniture inside of, you know, the department heads, the deputies, if you have an office, workstations, they all have the same furniture so that if we lower numbers in this building and we raise numbers somewhere else, we can move that furniture back and forth. So, instead of buying, you know, allowing departments to go in and buy furniture from Staples or, um, you know, pick a place, uh, we said, "This is what our standard is. This building is what our standard is and this is how we want to move forward."
Well, we have, excuse me, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shoemaker, you may.
We have all the furniture we obviously need, even if you've been through this building. So, if we close that building, what are you doing with that furniture? That's what, my, my fear is this, that if we wait till we get the space study and we make a determination what we're going to do, we might say, "Guess what, in two years or three years, you're getting all new furniture anyways and can we make it without spending twenty-five thousand or whatever it is, twenty-five thousand forty-six dollars?" So, that, that's my, that's my question. Is it something that's ad imperative right this second that we can't wait? Not that twenty-five grand is a ton in the splash of our budget, but every dollar counts. We've got a lot of pressing issues coming up in an economy that, you know, at any time we've rode this surge for years as far as our revenues, they've keep increasing and eventually that has to slow down. So, I'm just, I'm just, like I said, just asking the question, is it something that we could hold off on until we get the space study back and we determine what we're going to do or...
So, we could hold off on it if that's what you'd like us to do, but again, this is our standard. So, this would be the same type of furniture that if we renovated the McCree Building, we would use or if we go to a new building that we would use.
Sorry. I just, I have trouble believing that's what's going to happen just because I've been down here long enough, I've been part of stuff, because it won't be enough furniture, it won't be enough for the right, for the space and then what's going to have to happen, they don't make that furniture anymore. So, guess what, you're not going to put mismatched furniture into the room, you're going to buy all new. So, but board, move on, I'm not going to hold it up, but I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm a no on it right now because I'm just not thrilled with where we're headed with it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Shoemaker. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-six-eight-five, approval of a grant award from the State Court Administrative Office in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars to provide for operations of Genesee County's Adult Felony Recovery Court Program. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-six-eight-seven, approval of a grant award from the State Court Administrative Office in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars to provide for the operations of Genesee County's Mental Health Court. The budget for this grant is attached.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shoemaker?
We consider moving five through nine, considering their State Court Administrative Office grants.
If you want to make the motion, sure.
I'd like to make that motion.
Support.
It's been moved and supported that, uh, resolutions five through nine on page two of three be moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-seven-zero-one, approval to accept the recommendation of the Circuit Court Judges for the reappointments of Henry Hatter as the Republican Representative and Karen Aldridge Eason as the Democratic Representative to the Genesee County Jury Board for a six-year term commencing January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-six.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? So, I have a question and I'm not sure who might be able to answer it. I know that when we appoint people as partisans to things like the election boards and whatnot, that the parties send forth the candidates. The way I'm reading this, it was the judges that chose. I'm assuming these are the incumbents, is that?
Barbara Manier, our Circuit Court Administrator, she's, knows everything.
Would you, would you school me on this, please? Identify yourself if you would and...
I will do that.
Okay.
Barbara Manier, the Administrator of Circuit Court. There's a statute in Michigan which requires the Circuit Judges to make a recommendation to the county board. It's kind of an oddly worded statute passed in nineteen sixty, I just looked at it this morning, and it says that no two members of that three-member board or body can be from the same political party. So, what we did in this instance, we have two members whose terms will expire. I contacted the Chair of the Genesee County Democrat Party and the Republican Party and the Chair of the Genesee County Democrat Party and the Republican Party and said that these two individuals are seeking reappointment. Do you have other names you'd wish us to consider? And both of those individuals responded, they'd be happy for these incumbents to continue.
That's a fantastic response. I, I was hoping that the political parties were aware that we were, that these folks were stepping forward on their behalf. Thank you.
Pretty much.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2717, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in the amount of sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty dollars to provide for the 2025 Marine Safety Program.
Move it.
The budget for this agreement is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported, is their discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2740, approval of an agreement between Genesee County, Vienna Township, and Clough Area Schools in the amount of one-million-seven-hundred-forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-sixteen dollars to provide for police services and school resource deputies. The term of this agreement is January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is their discussion. Commissioner Shoemaker.
More of a statement, I am so happy to see this here before January 1st, just so, I appreciate it from the Sheriff's Department, everybody involved, that this is early and not being brought to us after the fact. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2754, approval of a request by the Genesee County Sheriff's Office to enter into an agreement between the Genesee County Paramedics Division and the American Red Cross of East Central Bay, Michigan, Flint Chapter, for the Pilot Partnership Pre-Hospital Blood Transfusion Program. Say that fast five times. And the amount of fifty thousand dollars to provide life-saving emergency blood transfusion services in the field for trauma and medical patients of Genesee County for fiscal year 25-26. These services would be at the, at a cost of six hundred dollars per patient to be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support?
I, I have a bunch of questions.
Support, it's on the floor. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can somebody explain this a little further, how this is gonna work?
So this would be providing blood to trauma patients in the field, trauma and medical patients in the field?
So the six hundred dollars is being paid for the patient, then?
That would be supplying the blood to the patient.
So it's six hundred bucks for...
Correct.
Wow.
Correct. And the partnership with Red Cross, the reason why the Red Cross is, there are two companies that provide blood in Michigan, Versity and Red Cross. Versity is stationed out of Oakland County, their place that I would pick up would be Farmington Hills or Saginaw. I reckon Red Cross is right down the street right next to Grand Travers.
If I may.
You may, Mr. Shoemaker.
So, something happens, we have to get the blood from the Red Cross or, to provide...
Correct.
Life-saving service.
So I would get, I would get the blood, it goes into our coolers, it lasts in there for twenty-eight days, and in that twenty-eight days, we'd have to use it, or we would lose that blood, and we'd have to provide another unit of blood.
Okay. What's, can somebody remind me what account this is then, two-one? Paramedic, okay. Okay, so how many courts are in my body, Marty? At least I know I'm worth a couple grand.
So it's the number one, it's the number one cause of death in traumatic patients? The number one cause of death in traumatic patients is blood loss, and with that, you can reverse it at a pretty good rate, thirty-seven percent of chance, if you give blood in the field. Now, would you have a third county doing that? The only other two are down in Macomb County and then north of us at Saginaw County.
No, I, I, like I said, I, obviously, it's, it's important, it's just amazing, you know, we do, there's blood drives, we've all gone, and not everybody maybe, donate, you know, I'm gonna get my frequent flyer card from, from them, you know, for donating blood, and they don't pay me anything, and yet it's six hundred bucks when it comes to the taxpayer paying it. So I just, I'm a little shocked, I know we need it, but it's still...
But when you read, when you read through that contract, we have to provide a couple of blood drives per year as part of that contract as well.
Yeah, so it's, it's a... Working, working, working for our residents again, so, thank you. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Captain, are there additional comments or questions? So right now, you have no source of blood when you arrive at the scene of an accident.
Well, we give them a normal saline and get them to the hospital in hopes that they don't bleed out in front of us.
Do you know offhand approximate number of people, is it a week?
So last year, based on the, the protocol that has gone through the committee that will go in place, it was roughly a hundred and twenty patients that we transported. Genesee County overall would be about two-fifty, but the other ambulance companies might be carrying the blood as well, so we're not really sure what that number is. That's why we're doing the fifty thousand dollar pilot project, to figure out what exactly that number is gonna be, and then we can adjust according to that.
And once the fifty thousand has been spent, if the pilot is successful, in your mind, you would come back to us?
Come back to you and ask for more money and apply for some grants. OHSP has some grant funding that's going for it. And really, the idea is to try to get the hospitals on board where we can do a one-for-one transfer at the hospital. I had Dr. Schmitzberger was gonna be here, and hopefully he walks through the store any second. He's from Hurley Hospital, and he's really pushing Hurley to join onto our adventure and make this a, no cost for us, that Hurley would be supplying the blood, but we're not there yet, because the data's not there yet. So we're hoping after the trial period of six months, we'll have enough data that we can get the trauma surgeons and stuff on board, get Hurley on board to pay for the drug.
And, and who in your area spearheaded this? Was it, were you the leader on this? Is there...
Dr. Schmitzberger.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We need innovation, and this sounds like it might save some lives. Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, just a little clarification, the, when you mentioned transport, you don't transport the people to the hospital.
Well, we jump in the back of an ambulance and transport with some of the patients.
Right, okay, and, and they don't necessarily always have the blood with them.
Correct. As part of this program, the way the protocol is written, two paramedics have to be there on scene to give the blood. So even on the ones that we would normally not transport with, if they're receiving blood, both paramedics would, would ride in the back and go to the thing. So, our plan is they can have one unit of blood, and MedStar and MMR are both gonna have a unit of blood. So there'll be three in the county, but...
Okay, as we...
Once we figure out need, I'm sure it's gonna change around, and we'll, we'll see where it goes from there.
Well, as we work with the 911 Study Commission and stuff, maybe that's something we should talk about, you know, some better coordination there, because it...
It makes the most sense for us.
Because what I'm hearing doesn't really make it. You know, I'm glad you're taking initiative to correct it, but it's like, why does this problem exist to begin with, you know?
It makes the most sense for us to carry it, because we get dispatched to every medical emergency that might need the blood, or the other agencies may not be even trying, you know, dispatched to that call.
Okay, I'm just saying, it needs some more work, but I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Thank you, Captain. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Our final resolution, 2025-2769, approval of a proposed amendment to Policy 01.002, Appointment Policy. Moved with the question, supported. Was that you, Commissioner Shoemaker? Please. Can I point out that we do have, I think everyone has a copy where you see red and blue, those are the suggested amendments to the appointment policy. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you guys meeting for the Appointment Committee, even though I wasn't there. I apologize again, I had a medical issue that I just wouldn't have made it. So, I did have some questions, and I hope this board, I'd like to just move this, but I'd like to have some things added before next week, and I just want to lightly go over those, so I'd like to go over them during the week with, with the Chair, just so we could put them in. But under, as an example, under Section Four, where we talk about the actual prerequisites, now, we, we don't, we have some...
That's number four on top of page two?
On page two, yeah.
Okay.
On mine, it's actually page...
And it carries over, yep.
Yep, with, with all their shall be a resident of Genesee County, so on and so forth. Because of the requirements we put in, like for the opioid committee and everything else like that, I think we need to draft some language that states that the requirements, some type of language we put in there, addressing specific requirements needed, because like under the opioid committee, we've got some very specific ones. So that's something just, Commissioner Wayheal, I'd like to talk to you before next meeting, and if the board is okay with, we'll come back with some change.
Could amend it, we could amend it next week.
That's what I'm saying, some change you and I can, you know, go through from there. That's one of them. I've got two other spots, but I'm not gonna hold it up tonight. I thought just, if you're okay with it this week, I know we're meeting over some other stuff, so if you'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we'll see each other Friday.
So we'll do that, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other discussion? So I'll just say a couple words, just to orient you to the document. In many places, there, these are just corrections of, or refinements, could be a correction of a misspelling or a typo, or it could be just a refinement in the language that doesn't change the substance. The, the two principal things that this will do is hopefully ensure that the candidates that come to us for appointments that are listed on our official public agenda for our consideration are eligible for that appointment before they get on that, get on the public agenda. So there is a section in here, it would be on the bottom of page three, I think, where the Corporation Council, so our Attorney for the County and our Director of Administration, have to coordinate with the Appointments Committee leadership members. You know, I guess that's a committee of the whole, which I didn't realize till we met, but the leadership of the committee to go over the list, and within reason. I, you know, my expectation is that we're not gonna run background checks, but, you know, good minds around a table looking at people should be able to find some things that might not be quite right in terms of eligibility. The other piece was a whole communications section, which is number 11, notifications to applicants. This is brand new. I've had some colleagues in the community, people that wanna participate in county government through appointments, apply, they get the initial response automated email through our system that says, thank you for applying. If they're not approved by us, they never hear anything ever again, so they don't know what the process is. I've had people say, when will I get my interview? How are you evaluating me? I've been sitting in meetings where we voted on a person, and they're texting me to say, when will this be on the agenda? So what I'm trying to do with Section 11 is do a better job communicating with people who are putting themselves out there, and may or may not be chosen, but I think they all need, you know, good customer service from us in terms of notifications and telling them what the process is. Those are the fundamental substantive changes that I'm recommending to our policy. Do we have additional discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
I'd just like to thank you, Dale, for, for all the work on that. Commissioner Winfrey and I have actually, and the Chair, you know, we've, we've requested those letters be sent out to your request over four months ago. I'm sorry that people haven't gotten them, because we did have meetings, you know, Charles and I, and Del Rico requesting these things. So I think, I think it's good, once again, for staff to see that it isn't right, and things aren't right, and so they understand who is responsible and what's supposed to happen. And I really appreciate all the work. I appreciate everyone's work on this. I'm, as I've always stated, I think we're headed in the right direction. You look at the numbers of applicants we keep getting, and I spoke with Dr. Brown the other day, I said, we've really achieved something, because before, you know, Charles sat here with me many times, and I'd ask, how many do we have? Josh would answer, one. And now we've got sometimes dozens of people applying for two or three positions, and, and it's such a blessing to see people involved and engage in our community, and it gives us an opportunity to put more qualified people onto these boards. We have our interest in mind, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. As an aside, before we vote, we do have, just as a reminder to the community, whether they're in the audience or at home, we have three different boards, steering committees, whatever you want to call them, that are seeking nominees, nominees, appointments for us to consider. Two slots that are going to be open, there's two incumbents, but they, they may not choose to apply, on the Bishop Airport Authority Board. There are four positions, terms that are open on the Genesee County Parks Board, and then there's 11, as you mentioned earlier, on the brand-new opioid Settlement Task Force. So there are no incumbents there, because it's a new, it's a new group. So please continue to apply through, I believe it's the 13th of December, and you can find access to the applications on our website, at the county, or through eighteen-thirty-six-place.com. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. I have a couple items under Other Business for Governmental Operations, excuse me. The first is, thank you for those of you that submitted your evaluations of our two direct reports, Corporation Council and Director of Administration. Those were due to Commissioner Shoemaker and me, based on what we adopted on our timeline and our process by midnight this past Sunday. Commissioner Shoemaker is Vice Chair of this committee and I, and based on the policy that was adopted by this full commission, are gonna meet this Friday, look at the individual evaluations for each position, and not change a thing, but aggregate both positions into, all the evaluations into two different documents, where you'll have all the narrative comments for each position, and you will have all the scores averaged based on how many people submitted for each row on the evaluation rubric. And so, and then what we need to do after we have that aggregate evaluation for each position is schedule, either schedule a special meeting for discussion about the evaluation results, or tack it on to a regular meeting. We only, I think, have one regular meeting left in the year, so very likely it's gonna have to be a special, but I'm open to discussion. And Mr. Chair, if you want to weigh in as to when we should do, either it's, either it's gotta be next week as a, as a special, or as an add-on item. We can go into closed session, as I understand it. I did email everyone what the Corporation Council sent about how we need to do this, so that we're very much above board and within the law in terms of what, how we carry this out, but we do need to set some sort of a date so that we can look at what we've got and have some discussion. So that was a, that was that. And then the 250 Commission, Patrick, I wonder if you might, he's not hearing me, I don't think, is he here? Oh, Patrick, come on up. So, we adopted in the early summer a resolution establishing our own America 250 Commission, and as I understand it, they've begun to meet.
Yes.
Isn't that great?
Yes.
So would you give us kind of a rundown of where it stands? One of the things I want to make sure we, that you share is, are there still openings on the body that need to be filled?
Yes.
Some of the positions are not filled by us, but if there's any that an individual commissioner needs to fill, or the Chair, we would want to know that now, so we can add the names, and then we'll open it up for any questions.
Sure. So the Michigan Township Association, I know, talking through, Josh, that has to go through their process, and it sounds like they do have somebody working through, but that's currently a vacancy. Hire Ed, your person accepted today, so we have him on there as well, and City of Flint is the one that we're waiting for. Yep.
Okay. And is, that's a, is that a city council appointment, or is it a mayoral? I have it in front of me, so I guess I should know, right? It says to be appointed by the Flint City Council, so have we, did we send them something? Okay, if you would. So tell us about the first meeting and, and what we can anticipate.
Okay. So before we had the first meeting, talked with some local partners too, Flint Cultural. They have been working for a year on some of the same things, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't duplicating anything. So we're working with Todd on some of those things to look at how we can combine some of our efforts to have a greater impact for Genesee County. First meeting, we went about an hour and a half, and we could have kept going for another hour and that. So we had a lot of robust discussion. You know, obviously, you know, the resolution was written that we're having a celebration at Crossroads, but, you know, we also wanted to make sure that we were able to, you know, create value for everybody else as well. So we're looking at ways to do that. You know, working with ISD, we're looking at doing some education programs around the framework that Michigan has for the 250. We're looking at doing a program, we're not quite sure which one we're gonna use, but we're looking at like a program called Adventure Lab. So people will be able to look, or be able to go to, you know, whether it's a cemetery or a building, or, you know, an area of significant historical impact to Genesee County, and picking a couple from every district and that, so people can go around. We're working with the Cultural Center on a passport book. Something that you'll see coming before you at some point is another resolution that mirrors what Michigan America 250 has, which gives us opportunities to partner and to be listed on there sort of thing. And, you know, a big thing is, you know, being able to collectively market it, you know, across the county and that, not just, you know, the, the one event that we're having.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, Patrick, I was recently approached by a gentleman, and that's involved with the veterans, and I don't know if our Veterans Director knows about it, but I know that the veterans, they really want to coordinate a big event with whatever the county's doing. Retired Colonel Robert Swartwood is initiating that, so I told him to, to contact various people. So, could you reach out to him? I'll give you his number.
Yeah, if I can get your information after, yeah.
Did he already reach out to you?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll get his number to you.
Yeah, we've had some conversations, you know, with Sons of the American Revolution and Daughters of the American Revolution and that, but we haven't reached that point.
And I know some local municipalities in the northern end of the county are already working together, and they need to coordinate, I believe, at least, that's my opinion, they should coordinate it with your committee.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, you know, when we learned that the Cultural Center or a cultural corporation was planning some big things, and they have been for a while, we're like, you know, we need to integrate this.
Well, I know the Vienna Township and the City of Clough, they've already come together to do something, and I think that it would be prudent for us to reach out to them.
Yeah, well, something that we've...
Make it part of the whole thing.
Something that we've asked every representative for the district is to talk to the local municipalities within their districts to see what's going... within their districts to see what's going on. So in our next meeting, we're going to review that sort of thing and take a look and see, you know, where we can.
Yeah, and I told them to contact the representative of my district, so.
Perfect.
Just trying to coordinate it all, that's all.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you all had any conversations yet about corporate sponsorships to help support a celebration?
Initially, we brought that up a little bit, but we haven't acted on that. So, you know, we had our first meeting two weeks ago, and we laid the framework of, you know, what we were going to do and how we were going to do it, and, you know, now it's action time.
Okay, I do have a lead for you I'd like to share with you, so I'll do that. And I also want to make sure, have you had any conversations with the Convention and Visitors Bureau about?
So, Amari has been added on for the next meeting.
Okay.
So hopefully she can make it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Talk to me about the budget a little bit. I know when we approved the resolution that we allowed up to $250,000. I didn't realize it at the time, and I voted on it, so shame on me, but it's Convention and Visitors Bureau dollars, so it's tied to bringing in tourists from outside the county. So the way that, in my mind, the way that we justify spending those dollars is if there's a, if there will be a tourism impact. And talk to us about, have you established line items within the $250,000? So are we certain that we're going to spend that much, or that's a ceiling? And talk to us about how we can use tourism dollars for what I sort of perceive to be as mostly a, you know, in-county kind of thing, where people are going maybe from one area to another, but within the county.
Yeah, so one of the things that we talked about, you know, almost every district, you know, they're like, "Well, you know, we thought we were going to get money, you know, for an event that we're having," and that. So, you know, we talked through, well, you know, that isn't necessarily feasible because, you know, if we split, you know, that budget out amongst everybody, you know, and have an event, you know, we're not going to have, you know, very much for anything. So, you know, what we were talking about is, you know, how do we collectively market it and get it out to everybody, so we had that big reach throughout the county.
Thank you. Thank you. No other discussion? Thank you for indulging me with other business. We are adjourned at 6:42.
We're going to call the Human Services Committee to order at 6:42. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzinoff?
Here.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present. It's time to chair and entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs, ahs. Motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any comments to this committee? Mrs. Wiggins?
Hello.
Hello, hello. I'm here to...
Can you state your name?
Okay, my name is Janice Wiggins. Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Janice Wiggins. I service as a Director for May's Senior Center here in Flint, Michigan, so. And I'm here to, because I want to find out an anticipated timeline for when the village application that we at May's Center submitted to the county. May's Center has, when the city took over in April, the May's Center has done a lot of fantastic things. Right now, we have a membership of 250 people, and that's unduplicated. And so we're doing great things at the May's Center, but we're just concerned about the village because that can help us fund some of our projects. We're doing a fantastic job. If you haven't visited the new May's Center, please come and visit the new May's Center. We just got finished with having a grandfather-granddaughter's dance. We've had a Miss Senior Flint, Michigan. And so we're doing a lot of fantastic things at the May's Center, but we need the support of the village. First of all, it has to be put on agenda. We submitted our application in August, and it hasn't been on your agenda as of yet. We seem to have been going through a lot of hoops just trying to get the application processed. We, I believe we submitted it in March, and then we had to resubmit it. And after we resubmitted the application, we met each criteria. We got a resolution from the Flint City Council. We've done a lot of things, and right now we're just waiting on the village for it to go into the, on your agenda. We've been writing emails to each of the commissioners. I'm sure you received an email from me, as well as Mr. Taylor, our Chief of Staff. Oh, here he is. We've been trying to communicate for us to get our application on the agenda. Mr. Taylor?
Can we extend our time to conclude?
Yeah, yeah, you can continue.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, 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 good. So this is what we're looking for. We don't understand why it hasn't been put on the agenda, but this is a place that our seniors have, they're taxpayers, they need to receive some of this funding from our village. And we are anticipating the need for this village. Okay.
Mr. Taylor?
What I got to give you? My name and what else?
Yeah, just the name and residence.
Okay. Name is Ed Taylor.
Account number.
You don't want that because your hand will be cut off. Reside in, on Elm Road in Montrose, Michigan, resident of Genesee County. Chief of Staff over at the City of Flint. I just want to echo a few things that Mrs. Wiggins stated. I have talked to Commissioner Lloyd today and other times, and we talked out in the hallway earlier, and talked to Commissioner Winfrey. I talked with Mr. Avery as well about our concerns at the May's Center. We have put a lot of money into that facility since we took it back over. When I was on the city council, we actually ran it, but somewhere along the line after I left, and I believe it was the financial manager, they closed it up, and then it was reopened under a nonprofit. We changed the name to the May's Center only because we didn't want any confusion. Presently, it's been the Hasselbring Senior Center, but it's been a nonprofit. So, the name of that, for all the years that I can remember back when it was built, was the Hasselbring Center, but we changed it just so we wouldn't have that duplication. And basically, like Ms. Wiggins said, we've done great things up there. We have senior citizens coming in every day. We have programs, and we would just like to get a share of the senior village money because they pay, you all pay, everybody pay. So, in closing, I would just like to say, we would like to get it on the agenda so it could get voted on, whether it's up or whether it's down, just so we could get it moving. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. Okay. There's no communications?
Mr. Chair, before we proceed to our resolution, thank you to Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Wiggins for coming to speak. We've had conversation today and some conversation previous, and talked through a few things. At some point, something will be coming to this board for our consideration. What I'm endeavoring to do is to handle this additional center or these additional resources the way that I handled the last resolution that we brought to this body. It's my plan to have a town hall with the seniors there to talk to my constituents that I share with the City of Flint regarding their desires at that center, and then, as is before, after I meet with them, then we'll have something that comes before us. What I will say to our body is this, because there's been a lot of outreach, there's a common courtesy that we give each other in our respective districts when engaging with local leaders on particular issues, whether economic development or potential business ventures. I know that I'll be out in Commissioner Getzinger's district possibly tomorrow with respect to him and his district. He's invited me in to have a conversation for a particular cause, and I just want to make sure that we continue to do that and to not, you know, just to give each other the courtesy within the districts that we represent, because we all have conversations with elected leaders and business leaders and residents as we work through our process to bring in the resolutions that we desire to bring that impact our individual districts. So I just wanted to just highlight that. I'll continue to give all of you that respect in your districts, and I appreciate that you have continued to do so for me as well. There are no concerns. Thank you.
Okay. There are no communications, no old business, new business, Resolution 2025-2436, approval of a purchase order to various vendors for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to provide for seeing investigations by Genesee County's medical examiner. The cost of this purchase will be paid from the following account.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2617, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Global Clinical LLC in an amount not to exceed $59,784.96 to provide behavioral health services to enrollees of Genesee County's Healthy Start Initiative. The term of this agreement is November 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2026, and the cost will be paid from the following account.
Support. So, so moved.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion?
All the voices are blending.
Okay, here none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Motion carries. Items three and four have been dropped, and I guess we will be revisiting it at a later date, and if there's no other business before this committee, we stand adjourned. We heard you, Commissioner Lloyd.
All right. Call the Public Works Committee to order 6:52. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Flewelling?
Present.
Commissioner Avery?
Present.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker? Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, Resolution 2025-2767, approval of meeting minutes, November 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Any public comment to the committee? Public comment to the committee? Any public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. No communications, no old business. New business, Resolution 2025-2441, approval of the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Marketing Plan for fiscal year ending 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2477, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Consumers Energy in an amount not to exceed $180,000 to provide for modifications of electrical to separate Genesee County's jail from the former admin building. Cost of this agreement will be paid from account listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions or comments? Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Was this, when we initially considered the funding of the building, this was figured in, the separation? I know we talked about this a long time ago, but this is figured in there, and we figured into this year's budget.
I'm assuming it was in the budget? Yes, Simpson?
I was told this was...
Oh, yeah, this was the stuff that Consumers already did.
Are we sure? I see Ray out there. That's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the guy that would know, just not doubting you two, but I'm gonna call up the expert here, so.
Morning. Afternoon.
Evening.
So, much of the work's already been done, but as you are probably aware, that Consumers Energy is doing a large upgrade throughout Beach Street and downtown, so it coincided with that work, so they've already done much of the work associated with it.
Thanks, Ray. Just a question. So they've already started, did we approve something before for them to start this process, or did I?
So it was already always part of that process in order to get rid of the administration building. We had to separate power from the admin to the jail. Consumers' power and doing that upgrade down there did the work already.
Gotcha.
Did the board approve something yet? No.
Okay. Are there going to be any additional costs to this, then?
There will be additional costs because once the power is separated, it has to be, we have to hook into the jail.
Okay. So, if I may, sorry, Mr. Chair. So we're gonna have, so everyone understands that they're hooked, the old administration building and the jail, obviously, are hooked together. We're trying to separate those out. We're still gonna have to keep power, though, at the old administration building for the pumps in the basement, though, and a few other items, correct?
Yes, until we demolish it or sell it.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Josh.
Any further questions, comments? Mr. Kuzinoff?
Yeah, just to refresh my memory, we already approved doing this process. We're just approving the amount of money now? Because I remember this being on the agenda in the past.
Yep, we're approving to pay the bill now.
Okay.
The work is done, we're approving to pay the bill.
Yeah, but we approved already the process.
It was always part of the process in leaving the administration building, yes.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ray, questions? As we're talking about consumer power and power in general, the county jail, I know that there have been some power challenges. I'll just stop there in that facility. Is there, is there a plan? Maybe, Mr. Freeman, you can speak to that, too. Is there a plan to have those issues resolved? I know that there's some consistency issues as relates to that.
There are, and when we do the second phase of this and re-feed the power to the jail, we're going to look at the switchgear and, you know, the jail's nearing 50 years old, so we need to do some refreshing of some of the equipment.
So, I appreciate that. So I'm thinking, even in talking to the sheriff's office, because I've gotten the calls, when you all have gotten the calls, you call and inform me that this is happening, it seems like that's pretty dire. I'm trying to be, you know, not use too many words here. So it seems like it's not something that can really wait for, like phases down the road, like it's something we need to be looking at more in the short term. I'd love to see a plan and maybe whatever the resources, whatever that looks like in terms of capital improvement, be brought to us so that we can discuss it more and consider, you know, what we can do to resolve that. So I appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
I got a question. Is there a timeline that you can maybe bring something to the board?
We'll get you something in January.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2625, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Wilkinson Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $35,000 to provide liquid application of dust control at Genesee County's parks.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2628, approval of an easement abandonment.
Moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Where does this say? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Anybody that?
John O'Brien from...
There we go.
Hi, good evening, John O'Brien, Genesee County Water and Waste Division. The resolution includes three separate easements that we're abandoning. One is in Davison, Lapeer Road in Davison Township. That basically is the, there was a change in use of the property. Building was demolished, demolished. They gave us a new easement, relocated the water main, and now we're abandoning the old easement. The second one is in the City of Burton, and again, that's a similar one, change in use of the property. They granted us a new easement, constructed a new water main, and we're abandoning the old one. And then the last one is in... And then the last one is in, with GISD. It was an easement for a public sewer with the change in use. It has now become a private sewer and as a private sewer, we no longer need to maintain an easement on that, on that property.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2730, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Manik and Smith Group in an amount not to exceed $133,000 to provide demolition assistance services at the former Genesee County Administration Building. This agreement is fully grant funded by the CSMO Foundation.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2732, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Securitas Security Services USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $130,000 to provide unarmed security services at Crossroads Village. The term of this agreement is January 6th, 2026 through January 5th, 2027. Cost of this agreement is budgeted and will be paid from the account listed.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2734, approval of an agreement between Genesee County Parks and Recreation and Tasty Bits Catering to manage and provide cafeteria catering and concession services at Crossroads Village and Huckleberry Railroad.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Shoemaker?
Yes, if, Patrick could come up here, I got just a couple of questions if I may, Mr. Chair. Are, are we carrying the liability insurance on this? Obviously, they have their own policy, but are we carrying additional liability insurance on this? If something was to happen with food preparation or some other issues, obviously, they're gonna go after the bigger fish, which is Genesee County Parks and Genesee County. So I'm just wondering.
To, to my understanding, yes, we do have some liability. It is, you know, they do cover us as an additional insured as part of it, so there should cover us.
If I may, Mr. Chair. How much liability insurance do we require a contractor like this to carry with us?
I believe, I believe it's a million, Josh?
Can you find out and just, Patrick, just send me a text or shoot me an email, I would appreciate it. I'm just, not that it's gonna stop.
We have a standard checklist and that, so I'll dig it up and send it to you.
I just, I just wanna know for future reference, because I wanna make sure, maybe we need to update maybe a policy to make sure that number's high enough to cover wherever we are with judgments getting higher and higher. You know, we might need to adjust it, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2742, approval of an agreement between Genesee County, oh, I apologize. Resolution 2025-2737, approval of a purchase order to NAPID for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to purchase outfitting for Parks Equipment. Cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
Move it. Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2742, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and SHI International in an amount not to exceed $58,824 to provide for the renewal of VM software licensing for the county data center infrastructure. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Move it.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2745, approval of a purchase order to CDWG for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $110,000 to provide for the purchase of various computers and computer-related items. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker?
Are these computers county-wide or where are they? Do we know where they're going?
Get Mike come up.
They are for, yes, they're there for all, all departments.
We're just upgrading because things need to be updated.
Yeah, this is because of a technicality that this particular vendor is one of those giant warehousing-type vendors. And this particular request is for us to do the spot filling, smaller purchase orders. Over the year combined, it becomes greater than our threshold for approval, which is what we're asking is that because of that threshold, because we're doing onesie-twosies but over a year, it becomes accumulated a lot of money. We would like to get a blanket approval for that.
But if I may, one last question. This, this expense is budgeted or is this addition to their, what we've approved?
It's budget's coming out of our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No other business, we are adjourned at 7:04. There you go.